To gather together, to worship, but also mainly to gather around God's Word. I was talking to the children today in our E lessons about digging deeper, and that's one of the phrases that we talk about. So if there was one of the boys who was asking really good questions and things, and I said, "Oh, you're digging deeper in our E", and I thought, "Yeah, that's what we're doing tonight. We're digging deeper into God's Word." And I thought, "Doesn't matter how deep we dig, we'll never get to the bottom of it, do we?" You can never sort of say, "Oh, I fully understand every single word in Scripture." We might understand it a bit more or in a different way, but we can never fully understand it because His Word is just so amazing and alive and active. And when you think about even one word, you can look at it the next day and think, "Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, God spoke to me about..." And it's just so amazing that we've got that richness of His Word to come to tonight. A couple of things, I'm going to read a couple of verses in a moment, and then we'll have an opening song, and then we'll hand over to John. The other thing I'm going to say is that for those who know, and maybe quite a few don't know, Jan Hadley contacted me yesterday, and he's really sorry, but he's had to cancel coming on Sunday. He's got a lot of things going on at the moment. I won't go into full details, but it's family issues and family problems. So he would massively value our prayers. So when you're praying at home as well, please remember Jan, his wife, his daughter, grandchildren, his family, that they're really going through a really tough time at the moment. So please pray for Jan. I don't think he's ever cancelled, and I think hardly ever. And he's cancelled all of his appointments over this weekend. So please remember him in your prayers. But on a practical note, obviously, he's an itinerant minister, and he lives by going around churches and preaching and things. So I felt it on my heart, and I spoke to a few people. I think we should still do a collection for him on Sunday morning, despite him not being here. And we'll give a gift from church just to support his work. And I didn't tell him yet, but I think it would improve the situation, but it would help him and his family, obviously, going through this difficult time. So despite him not being here on Sunday, you've got me instead. Then despite that, that's good or bad, I don't know. Either way, we will be taking in a collection for Jan to support him and his work that he does, particularly at this time. I think that would be a good thing to do to support him. Thank you. A couple of verses from Colossians. Colossians chapter, I could read this whole chapter. Colossians 3, from verse 12 to verse 17, just a couple of verses. "Therefore God has chosen people holy and dearly loved. Plow yourselves with compassion, with kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. Bear with each other, and forgive whatever grievances you may have against one another. Forgive, as the Lord forgave you; and over all these virtues put on love, which binds them all together in perfect unity. Let the peace of Christ rule in your hearts, since as members of one body you were called to peace. And be thankful; let the word of Christ dwell in you richly, as you teach and admonish one another with all wisdom, and as you sing Psalms hymns and spiritual songs with gratitude in your hearts to God in whatever you do, whether in word or deed. Do it all in the name of the Lord Jesus. Give thanks to God, the Father, through him. Amen." Lord, we thank you tonight. We thank you that you are our Father, and Lord, we are your children. And we thank you that as we come to sit around your Word, to come and dig, to find those special things that, Lord, you've hidden away in your Word, we pray our hearts would be open to your Spirit, Lord. We pray that, Lord, we would receive revelation from your hand. We pray, Holy Spirit, come and open our eyes to what you have for us. Lord, we ask that our hearts, our spirits will be open to you, with you in your Spirit tonight. Lord, we ask for an impartation this evening. Lord, we ask for revelation to our hearts. We ask that our hearts would burn within us as we look at your Word tonight. Lord, teach us, show us how to live, show us how to do life every day. Lord, we ask in your name that your name will be uplifted through these things. And, Lord, we wouldn't forget to pray for Jan and his family at this time. Lord, we thank you for his ministry. We thank you for his faithfulness over these many years. And we pray that in this hardship, in this time of trial and tribulation, that, Lord, he will know your peace, he will know your strength, he will know, Lord, your hands right round about him. Lord, you saw his path yesterday as he was talking. Lord, I pray that, Lord, as he cries out to you, Lord, you will meet him and his family. Lord, you will be, Lord, just cover them with your feathers, Lord, I ask. Your protection to be round about them. I ask in your name, dear Lord, Jesus, the merciful man, amen. Because in Christ we have our confidence now.
(Singing) For I know my hope is mine. He is my light, my strength, my song. His voice is strong, it's sounding bright. For he is a strong and strong. What lights our love, what ends our peace. When days are still, when shining seas. My comforter, I hold it all. Here in the name of God, I stand. (Singing) For I know to our flesh. For this morning, heaven is safe. It's the hour of righteousness. So by the one who came to save you. There on thy cross lies Jesus' light. The love of God was satisfied. For every sin, only one's made. Here in the name of God, I stand. In the night, his body is made. By the light of the Lord, the same. And the rest is all, all is saved. I've done it three, he won't again. And as he shines in victory. Since Christ has lost, it's with all me. For I am him. And he is mine. All with the precious blood of God. In the night, the holy bread. When he sings the love of God, when he sings it sweet. The dancer's high to find a friend. Jesus, the one who has me. No power, no sin, no prayer. And ever thou be on his hand. Till he returns, who holds it all. Here in the name of God, I stand.
Yes, Lord, we stand, Lord, in your power tonight. We stand on your Word tonight, Lord. Your Word is powerful. Now, Lord, we stand, we're trusting, we believe in. Lord, we stand in faith tonight, that, Lord, we will, Lord, receive something for your hand tonight, that we will, Lord, have an encounter afresh with yourself this evening, Lord. Lord, have your way in this place tonight, I ask. In your name, we ask it. Hallelujah, amen and amen. Amen, it's good, isn't it, to worship? And it's good to come round God's Word. Have you got your shovels tonight? Your towels or your shovels, depending on how deep you want to go. So we're going to hand over to John as he comes in. I'm sure over the years, he's done quite a number of one or two Bible studies in his time. So he's certainly more than me. So I'll hand over to John, thank you. Take it away.
Follow that. Follow that. Well, we're beginning, or I'm doing the first two apparently. But we're going to be, every last Wednesday in the month, we're going to be looking at something in the Word of God. We're going to do it from January to November, because I don't think anyone will turn up on the last Wednesday in December. Now, I've made a list, but I'm sure that list will be changed, and I don't mind that in the least. Because I thought it would be good for us, seeing that we are preparing for new arrivals, to prepare ourselves. What God has been showing us over the last little while has been quite amazing. And it leaves us thinking, "Oh, couldn't you just send us an agenda? So we knew what, know what we're doing." But we know he's doing something, and we know that he loves surprises. So we need to prepare ourselves as much as we possibly can for all the surprises that we can cope with and the extra ones that he gives us anyway. I feel a little bit like those new parents, you know? You know that there are babies on the way, but you haven't got really a clue what to do. I remember when Peter was coming, we got all the literature and stuff given us, et cetera, and I can't remember any of it, except, "Don't feel guilty if you can't hood the curtains." I remember that instruction. And I looked at the curtains and thought, "Don't even think about it." Because you're going to get in. Baby or no baby. We need to be prepared to be disciple makers. That's more than just seeing people come to Christ. That's seeing people begin a journey and then go on the journey with them until they are confident enough to go along with somebody else who's just started the journey. We're not just here to make disciples, we're here to make disciples. What we want is to be grandparents in the faith. You know, we're not young. I know some mornings I look at myself and think, "My goodness, you're young." But after I lie to myself, we haven't got an awful lot of time. Well, kind of. But wouldn't it be lovely, by the time we're sitting back and just unable to do much except pray, to look at our spiritual grandchildren leading someone to Christ and then going out full tilt to disciple them? Or even great-grandchildren? That's what I want to see. I want to see grandchildren and great-grandchildren winning people for Christ and then giving them absolutely everything they have to build them up quickly. You know, growing in faith is not a timing thing. You can get someone who can spend 50 years in church and hardly grow at all, and somebody else who's been there a week. And already they're way ahead of an awful lot of people. It's not timing. It's commitment of the people who are around to really take hold of young people. I mean young people, why not? You hear so many young people talk about how they got so much out of their grandparents. Well, we're going to be spiritual grandparents. So we're going to look at some words. And the first word we're going to look at tonight is the word abide. The word abide. At first, we're going to read the passage, of course, it's John 15. How could it be anything else? Verses 1 to 17. And then we're going to look at it. As we're doing that, as we're getting there, in the ES3, my Bible, it is abide. If you've got King James, it's abide. There's quite a few Bibles has abide. The actual word can be translated remain. And I thought, "Well, shall we use the word remain?" And then I thought, "No," because you don't have anywhere as relevant, relational, as the word abide. I want you to imagine, I'm on a station, I just missed the last train. And I tell you, so I remained there. How do you think that works? What if I said, "And I abided there"? It gives you a whole different picture. Why has he suddenly got positive? He's missed the train. What's making him want to abide there? Remain there probably means the taxi's gone off and his phone doesn't work. And now he hasn't gone through, what are you going to do? I want to use the word abide, you know? Because there's one thing to remain in Christ. I think there's another thing to abide in Christ, which is a beautiful concept. And of course, the word abide comes from long ago. It's Old English. And of course, there's that hymn, "Abide with me, past pours the even tide." I remember that in the choir, singing that in an even song many a time. Abide. Well, let's read, shall we? We're going to just pray very quickly before we do read, because we want to read positively. We want to read with the Holy Spirit working in our eyes tonight, so that these words just fire up inside our being and cause us to go away and be thinking about them. And I pray, Lord, that tonight, even if it's not the word abide, may everybody have a word from this passage that they can go away with and can just rest in you with. Lord, build us up where we each are tonight. We pray that in the coming days, out of this study, we will move forward several paces, and we will grow up in preparation for what you are about to do. Amen. Verse 17, verses in this chapter then. "I am the true vine, and my Father is the vine dresser. Every branch in me that does not bear fruit he takes away, and every branch that does bear fruit he prunes, that it may bear more fruit. Already you are clean because of the word that I have spoken to you. Abide in me, and I am you. As the branch cannot bear fruit by itself, unless it abides in the vine, neither can you unless you abide in me. I am the vine, you are the branches. Whoever abides in me, and I in him, he it is that bears much fruit; for apart from me you can do nothing. If anyone does not abide in me, he is thrown away, like a branch, and withers; and the branches are gathered, thrown into the fire, and burned. If you abide in me, and my words abide in you, ask whatever you wish, and it will be done for you. By this my Father is glorified, that you bear much fruit, and so proved to be my disciples. As the Father has loved me, so I love you. Abide in my love. If you keep my commandments, you will abide in my love, just as I have kept my Father's commandments and abide in his love. These things I've spoken to you, that my joy may be in you, and that your joy may be full. This is my commandment, that you love one another as I loved you. Greater love has no one than this, that someone lay down his life for his friends. You are my friends, if you do what I command you. No longer do I call you servants, for the servant does not know what the master is doing; but I have called you friends. For all that I have heard from my Father, I have made known to you. You did not choose me, but I chose you, and appointed you that you should go and bear fruit, and that your fruit should abide; so that whatever you ask the Father, in my name, he will give it to you. These things I command you, so that you will love one another." This is why I prayed about God speaking into all our hearts, because it says abide 10 times in 17 verses. So there's plenty there. This is a nice meal, this is a good meal. In fact, there's so much there that we'll just have to take what we can cope with and then come back for some more, I'm sure we will. So the first thing I want to do this evening is to ask a question. Why the illustration? What is the point Jesus is trying to make of the vine and the branches and the vine dresser? What is it all about? And as I thought that and I read through the passage, I realised that verse 16 tells us. This is what it's all about. Look at verse 16. "You did not choose me, but I chose you, and appointed you that you should go and bear fruit, and that your fruit should abide." That's the point of the passage. That's why he gives us an illustration of the bearing of fruit and how we do it. It's obvious when you talk about a vine and the branches, that the branches didn't choose the vine that they were to go on. Of course, Jesus actually didn't, it went against tradition. Normally, if you wanted to follow a rabbi, you chose the rabbi. But Jesus chose those who followed him. And we know that if we're chosen, we're chosen. He says, "You didn't choose me, but I chose you." But then he says, "And appointed you." Ah, there's a job to do. This is what Jesus is on about. There's an appointment, it means to assign someone to a particular task. We have been assigned to a particular task. God has chosen you and me and assigned us to a particular task. But that particular task is the same thing. We're all assigned to the same task, though because our lives are different, we will fulfil that task in different ways. And the task is this, to bear fruit. And not just any old fruit, but fruit that will abide. Fruit that makes a difference, a fruit that's not here today and gone tomorrow. That kind of fruit can only be formed when we look at the illustration that he gives us. That appointment Jesus speaks about, of course, in Matthew 28. "As you go, make disciples," and then tells you what to do with them. And here, you should go and bear fruit. So we need to look, the first thing in this illustration is, the whole purpose is to bear fruit. Now, that seems very logical, doesn't it? If you were left by someone a vineyard, and you went and you stood and looked at your vineyard, it wouldn't take you much to think of the purpose of it, to produce fruit. And therefore, you then think, "Well, how can I do that?" So you start discovering how you did that, and you move forward. In this passage, that's exactly what Jesus has, he says, "There is the field. It's ready for harvest. It's a vineyard, and you're going to bear fruit. And you're going to bear the kind of fruit that lasts, it abides, just like you will." So there's our task. At the beginning of our year, that's what we're here for. But friends, that's what we were here for the moment we said yes to Jesus. That's what I mean about those young believers, very young believers, being taught straight away to make disciples. Pass it on. Pass it on. Pass it on while you're excited. Pass it on while you don't know half of what you're doing. Pass it on to people who, if you actually thought about it, you would never even dare. But you've got adrenaline rushing, so go and do it. Who knows what could happen? It's that excitement, that moving forward. So we come to the passage itself, to bear fruit that itself will abide. "I am the true vine," Jesus says in the beginning of the passage. "I am the true vine." What we have to understand is that the image of the vine in the Old Testament was so often used of Israel. There are two vineyard songs in Isaiah, chapter 5, and in chapter 27. The chapter 5 one, in the first two verses, tells us what happened to this vine that God set in the world. It produced wild grapes. After all he had done, it just produced wild grapes, which are no good to anybody. And so we find in the New Testament that God sends the true vine. Jesus comes, and he dwells on earth. He is the true Israel. And then we look and we see that there is a vine dresser, and Jesus tells us that it's his father. The actual word literally means farmer, gardener. But we're talking about a vine, so a vine dresser is vine. And a vine dresser does various things. And rather than explaining, I thought I'd show it. We've got a video, which I think must be an introductory video for those who are going for the first time to prune vines. So even if you're not, just listen.
And parts of the vine. The first thing you'll notice is that the vine is trained up and attached to a wire. This wire we refer to as the cordon wire or the fruiting wire. This wire gives the vine some structure and stops it from falling over. Here we have the trunk. This is the main thickened stem that grows up from the ground. Where the vine branches out, we call this area the head or the crown of the vine. This is the point where the vine branches out and forms what we refer to as the cordon. From the cordon, we have spurs growing up and out. And it's from these spurs we have our canes growing out. On our canes, we have these swollen parts here, and we call these nodes. And it's on the nodes that we have the buds. And then it's from the buds that we get the shoots and the fruit for next year. And if we look very closely here at the very base of this cane, we have the base bud. Pruning is the removal of canes. Here we can see a vine that's been half-pruned using the spur pruning method. And I'll just make the last couple of cuts. And there we go. We can see a vine now that's been half-pruned using spur pruning, and now the unpruned section over here. And I'll just finish it off now. The other method of pruning is cane pruning. And to demonstrate the difference between cane and spur pruning, I've pruned half of this vine using the cane pruning method and the other half of the vine using the spur pruning method. Now, this is not something we would do in the vineyard, but I just want to demonstrate the difference. So here we have our fruiting cane wrapped to the wire, hence cane pruning. And here we have our spurs on our permanent cordon, hence spur pruning. In this module today, we'll demonstrate both methods of pruning. We'll use the vines here in the Barossa to demonstrate spur pruning, and then we'll jump up to downland yields to demonstrate cane pruning. There are two main reasons why we prune. The first reason is to give the vine its shape and structure. If we didn't prune, the vines would continue to grow upwards and outwards, and would be very difficult to manage. The second reason why we prune is that it allows us to control the amount of fruit that the vine produces. Very simply, the more wood we remove, the lower the yield of fruit. And now it's time to prune. But what equipment do we need? Well, today with me, I have my snips or secateurs or shears, or whatever you like to call them. I've got a holster for my snips. Over here, I've got loppers, which we use for any larger pruning cuts. To keep these bits of equipment sharp, I've got a sharpening stone. I've got a sharpening stone. And then, to keep me safe in the vineyard, I've got glasses for my hands, protective glasses for my eyes, and a fluorid jacket to keep me visible in the vineyard. Now, it's important to know that there are different types of snips. The biggest difference is if they are hand or electric. If you're pruning a large area, electric snips are preferred as they take a lot of pressure on your hands. But they are more expensive to purchase and maintain. Today, as you've seen, I'm using the simple hand snips. Pruning is a physical job and occurs during the cold of winter. Even if you're using electric snips, it's still very important to wipe your hands and your back with some simple stretches before you make a start.
There you go, now we're never to do it. Of course, the logic is this. The less fruit you have, the more the energy goes into those less fruit. So instead of tiny little fruit like that, that is very sour, you end up with big fruit that is good. But I want you to notice as we go along, that wasn't just a little bit of pruning. I had a friend who had a vineyard under glass in Hertfordshire. And he took me around and he told me two things. One is telling how to drink coffee. And secondly, how to prune a vine. And he cut it right down to that big bud. And he said to me this, and we'll notice this. The closer you are to the stem, the more the goodness flows through you. Okay, now. I picked up a commentary by a man called Tenny. It was my father-in-law's. I know because I found his bits of paper amongst them. If I'd shown him to Paul, he should have sat there being all sort of, "Oh, Dad." He died a good many years ago. But Tenny looks at it quite interestingly, this passage. He says, "First, you need the right stock. I am the true vine." It's essential in a vineyard to get the right stock. So you go to a good nursery, and you buy the plants of those that are guaranteed to produce a true type, the real stock. And Jesus says, "I am the real stock." Lots of others will come in my name and in any other name, but I'm the only one. Do you remember, "I am the way, the truth, and the life"? It's the same kind of concept that we find here. He is the heavenly stock, the only source of the heavenly life of a spiritual vine. So it's very important we understand we need to be connected to the true vine, to the proper stock, to that which is there. The second thing you need is the right expert. My father is the gardener, the expert who knows when and how to prune to produce the maximum crop. Now, I do a bit of pruning now and again. Poor plants. And I look and I think, "Okay, that's climatic. Do I prune it now or do I prune it later? Or should I have pruned it several months ago?" And then I look at the rose bush and I think, "Okay, that's a tea rose. Now, if it was a floribund, what would I do with it?" And then you look at this, and then you look at that, and you think, "My goodness." You really need to know what you're doing. Well, occasionally, when you look at the gardening programmes, they say, "Don't worry about being a little bit violent with it." Yeah, that is nothing compared to what a vine dresser does. He decimates it, you know. Which is not good news for us. Because it really means that God is the expert who knows when and how to prune us for maximum fruit. And that can mean he cuts very close. Are you ready for that? You know, it's nice to hear that God's going to do something in our church, and it's nice to see the way already it's happening physically. And then it's nice to think how wonderful it will be when, you know, there's loads of new people and lots of things to do. But to get there, he has to prune deep. Are we ready to be pruned deep? Some of us already have been. Some of us over the years have been. And you may say, "Well, I was pruned deep about forty years ago, and I had this happen to me, and this happen to me, and this happen to me." Yes, but you've grown really big. And a gardener loves really big vines because he can really get, he needs those big sort loppers. And he can really have a go. "None of this, oh, I cut this a little bit off here, and that little bit off there, and that will look nice." It's straight down to one bud. And that can hurt. And I think we have to be ready both to be hurt by what God does to us individually, and to be there for others who are hurting because of what God has done or what God has allowed. I think we have to look at this and we begin to think, "Whatever happens to me in the next year, whatever comes on me in the next year, it is my Father pruning me." More of that in a minute. The third thing is we need a right culture. After the preparation of the soil and the water supply and all those kinds of things, the next thing is that pruning, as we saw in the video. It is absolutely vital. Now, Tenny says this. "As the farmer wields the pruning knife on his vines, so God cuts dead wood from among his saints, and often cuts back the living wood, as so far that his method seems cruel. From those who have suffered the most, there often comes the greatest fruitfulness." Oh, yes, Lord. I want to bring a hundred people in. Are you ready to pay the cost for that? Are you ready to be pruned that deep that you would be that fruitful? There's a question for us. And what of these branches? Well, there are two types of branch in this story. "Every branch in me that does not bear fruit, he takes away." Later on, we find that he cuts it off, lets it rot, and throws it in the fire. Hebrews six says this. "For land that has drunk the rain that often falls on it and produces a crop useful to those for whose sake it was cultivated, receives a blessing from God. But if it bears thorns and thistles, it is worthless and near to being cursed, and its end is to be burned." Look at our Lord. What did he call the Pharisees? Whitewashed tombs, places of the dead. They didn't understand him, they killed him. They rejected him. The branches that bear no fruit. But then there are branches that bear fruit. They're alive, they're abiding. They're even bearing a crop of some nature. What does he do with that? Well, it says here, "Every branch that does bear fruit, he prunes." But it was looking so nice. Well, at least it's not like the fig tree. Do you remember the fig tree? It had no fruit on it, but it had an awful lot of leaves, and he cursed it, and it died. That shows us again that when God wants fruit on his trees, he has to do something with them. And this is what he will be doing with us. As you saw in the video, they really do cut it back. It seems half the tree disappears. And as he said, if you didn't, it'd just get bigger and bigger and bigger and more and more unmanageable and bear less useful fruit. You see, we can only produce good fruit out of the bud that's closest to the vine. And that's an important principle in church life because some of us have at times, and we know people who do, rely on somebody else's spirituality to cover themselves. Maybe they sit in church all the time, and they smile nicely, and they sing the hymns, and they put money in the offering. But actually, they're relying on the spirituality of the pastor. Or perhaps one of the elders, or perhaps even the person that led them to Christ. Or there's a husband there who's relying on his wife's spirituality. He's not spiritual, he knows how to look spiritual, but he doesn't know how to be spiritual. There's a lot of cutting back that's needed there to bring them back to the point of growth. So we prune. Our growth is good, we branch out, we are noticeable. We produce lots of buds, we produce lots of flowers, we produce lots of fruit, and we're useless. I remember a debate at our conference for quite a while, there was, "What is success?" That is a strange question when you start to think about it. What is success? Success is what God says success is. My friends, isn't it? You know, success is not having a church of a thousand. If God told you, you just bring up your family and bring them before the Lord. Success is a family brought before the Lord and working on with God. Success is what God chooses success to be, and he therefore prunes the way he decides to prune. So we can't go to God and say, "Well, look, I'll abide in you, but actually, I only need a sort of cut here and a little bit off there, and perhaps I could be a little less angry at times and smile more, and maybe sing better, and give more to the money to the offering." Lord. And he looks and he goes, "Nah." "No, no." "Right, hold your own, take a deep breath. We'll do it my way." Who knows what that will be? And are we prepared? There's a passage in Hebrews twelve which says, "Let us run with endurance the race that is set before us." And a little bit later, the writer says, "It is for discipline that you have to endure. God is treating you as sons and daughters. For what son is there when his father does not discipline? But he disciplines us for our good, that we may share his holiness." To be fruitful, to share in his holiness, to share in his joy as we fulfil the task that he has given us. All those, so many wonderful things in Scripture. But pruning's still tough. It's still hard, and it's still necessary. It may hurt a great deal. But my question I've written here, it's a question to me as much as it is a question to you. How much do I really want to bear fruit? How desperate am I to bear fruit? That's the question. Well, maybe you could take away some of the bits that aren't alive in me? Yeah, but the trouble is, God chooses which bits are alive and which bits are not. Or, "What about the damaged, you know, in my, I don't know, in my character and stuff, and the diseased bits that, you know, just this bit and a little bit of that?" And he looks and he says, "Now, I'll choose which bits are diseased and damaged." And then we say, "Well, okay, I understand, Lord, that I'm a bit out of control. I'm involved in this, and I'm involved in that, and I'm involved in the other, and I'm all over the place. But maybe you could just trim this branch and that little bit." And God says, "No, snip." And it all goes. Or maybe, "Lord, I'm a bit leafy. I'm unfruitful, but I look good. You know, I look like a good Christian." Now, God says, "I choose. I choose." "But what, I produce all this fruit?" "Yes, the Lord says, but nobody can eat it. It's useless. It's his choice, because he is the gardener, and we must put him ourselves in him. So here's the deal, we abide. Only sap from the master is good enough. We cannot grow anything by ourselves. No fruit can come from us unless it comes through him." He says, "Already you are clean because of the word I have spoken." Isn't that lovely? Because God has spoken his word, we're already clean. It's not about being clean. It's about being fruitful. I want you clean, and I want you fruitful. I want you to be a blessing to the world. I want you to exhibit the very glorious presence of God in your neighbourhood. I want you to live out the life that just reflects Jesus everywhere, whether that gets you into trouble or people say how wonderful it is, or people say, "I want that." Whatever the response. I read this. "By his Spirit, he invades the heart of the sinner who becomes a saint, and has received the power to abide in Christ. The more we do so, the more we will experience Christ's loving presence." And then he says, "It's all by grace from the start, but the responsibility is firmly on our shoulders. Exertion is needed. We have to abide." He doesn't say, "I abide in you, and I'm making you abide in me." He says, "You abide in me, I abide in you. I know I abide in you, you know I abide in you. Now you abide in me." Nothing else. Don't abide in anything else. Abide in me. And then out will flow the spiritual sap that will make you fruitful. Instead of being this massive branch with all the leaves and the flowers and no fruit, you will become a tight branch. Every year, you will fruit off a new growth. You will be constantly growing. We'll cut away the last stuff. However nice it was, it's no good for the next season. And we have a new season coming, my friends. The fruit of abiding and being pruned. See, it's not for us. We're not going to bear fruit for us. We're bearing fruit for the people around us. You're bearing fruit for your family, for your neighbours, for your friends, for the people you bump into, for that woman on the counter at Sainsbury's or wherever you go, who you've just started to chat with because you see her fairly often. You only have a few moments. And it started with, "You're all busy here today." And it now got to the point of, "How's your sister? I've been praying for her." Because we're abiding, because the sap of the Spirit is flowing through us, these opportunities are happening. And we think, "Why didn't these happen before?" Because you weren't fruitful. Because we weren't ready. If we're ready and enduring what it's cost to get ready, and we are keen, we can bear fruit. And what is this fruit? Well, there are so many different things it could be. For a start, it could be Galatians five, couldn't it? It could be that I start exhibiting so much more love and joy and peace and patience and kindness and goodness and faithfulness and gentleness and self-control, and that woman at Sainsbury's says, "No, just..." And she's opened it up. And I found out things that I've prayed about. She's had answers to prayer. And I've been able to give her a little New Testament psalm. I gave out one this week. Ah, it's lovely. You know, when you give one out and they don't want it, but they're stuffed in their pocket and you think it's going in the bin, that's one thing. But when you give it to them and they're grateful, and you've already sneakily told them, "Don't start in something complicated." It's lovely. It's lovely. I pray that that will be fruitful. And I've only got five more, so I'll have to give some more. They actually are all goodie ones. I had at the hospital, but I kept them. But to give them away, and to give me away, and be worth giving away. Then of course, it's the very way we conduct ourselves. How can that be fruitful? Well, Peter says in 1 Peter 3, "In your heart honour Christ the Lord as holy, always be prepared to make a defence to anyone who asks you for the reason, for the hope that is in you. Yet do it with gentleness and respect, having a good conscience, so that when you are slandered, those who review your good behaviour in Christ may be put to shame." That having had a good go at you, they feel ashamed. Because actually we really do have something. And we know what we've got. We've got Jesus. And we want them to have Jesus. Of course, the greatest fruit, if you like, is new believers. And actually, as I said, there's one more. It's when your new believer is growing and is now reaching out to somebody else and now is trying to disciple them. And he keeps coming to you for advice, you know. And usually it's terrible, advice on things you haven't got a clue about. Terms you don't know, things you don't talk about. You know. My friend, you know, we won't go into that. But don't worry, the grace of God is involved. Grace of God is there. And look at what Jesus calls it. He says, it's called it bearing fruit in verse four. By the time he gets to verse five, it's bearing much fruit. And by the time he gets to the end of the reading, it's bearing fruit that abides. It gets better. It gets more wonderful. And here's one last thought. In verse seven, it says, "If you abide in me and my words abide in you, ask whatever you wish and it will be done for you. By this my Father is glorified, that you bear much fruit and so proved to be my disciples." Isn't that incredibly amazing? We have heard in this passage from his word. And as we abide in him and as we allow this word to abide in us, we can ask whatever we want. Of course, that's a trick. Delight in the Lord and he'll give you the desires of your heart. Of course he will. And if you delight in him, you get his desires in your heart and it works. If we abide in him and we allow his word to abide in us, then we can ask whatever we want. Yeah, but what we want now is what he wants. And there's a promise there. But much fruit necessitates much pruning. And I want to ask, just as I close, and I've probably gone on too long, so next time I'll be told and I'll do it shorter. But I just want to really get to this point and say, this church is prepared to go through everything that is needed to renovate the building. And we've done a lot of it and you have a look at the new doors. We're getting posh. And it's going to go through here and we're going to have to go all, we're going to have to be pruned and go down the end there until this is ready. And then the whole building is ready. And we're willing to pay the cost. It's quite expensive, but we're willing to pay it. But is this church willing to pay the cost of being a fruitful church? And then we have to ask personally. Maybe this is something we need to go home with. Lord, am I prepared to be severely pruned so that I can be fruitful? Even at my age. Age has got nothing to do with it. Moses was pruned for forty years, he lost everything. And then God was ready to use him and make him fruitful. God is looking for people who want to be fruitful and are willing for the Father to come and prune. Let's pray. Lord, we we come before you and we can get all keen and excited and say, yes, Lord. But help us, Lord, to think for a while, to sit, to kneel, to wait on you and to see if we're really ready, really available to you. Lord, we want this to be real and personal. We want this church, yes, to be fruitful, but how we long to be fruitful in this church. Lord, we want to minister your grace. We want to glorify you by our being and doing and saying and worshiping and sharing. Here are our prayers now, Lord. And bring us over the next few days to that point of understanding so that we can make a proper choice. And Lord, we pray that as you prune, you will put in such a vision in our hearts for growth and for new life that it will far outpace anything we have seen thus far. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Certainly given us a lot of, a lot of things to think about. A lot of questions that we can ask ourselves. I think this question, we could talk about them openly. I think a lot of it is sometimes between us and God. Some of this is, maybe not to share openly, although some things, sometimes things are. There is, John, I wrote down two things. Well, I wrote down a load of things he said, but the question at the end was, are we willing to be a fruitful church? And I believe the answer is yes. And I believe for each of us, over the years, at different times, we've been through pruning, we have. But maybe for this season, maybe it's a new pruning season. But also I wrote down in the middle, and John didn't say this, but I wrote it down. I have to trust that God is the master gardener. I'm rubbish at gardening. And I will admit it, I hold my hand up. I have the clue. I hope, I just, we plant something and we just hope and pray it grows. Tony is our gardener and he comes down and he pulls the leaves off and he prunes things and he does the stuff that has to be done. And he says, have you watered that? I said, well, we've watered it, but I didn't know we had to take the leaves off. I didn't know. And we just, we hope and pray that plants survive and sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And if Tony waters them, if Tony prunes them, they survive. And then they bear fruit. If I was doing it, I think most things would die and nothing would happen. We'd get no flowers, we'd certainly get no fruit. But I have to trust tonight that God is our master gardener. That God knows what he's doing with us. That God, and I have to trust in him that he knows what is best for me, for each one of us, for the church, that he, that in his hands can be nowhere better. Thankfully not in my hands, because as gardeners, I do go. It's not me, because I'm not a gardener. But he is. And he's the master. And he has us. And he just does what he needs to do, when he needs to do it. Thank you. Thank you for that tonight. And we're going to close by singing a song that's, that was sung for quite a number of years. And when we get to the chorus, I always want to change the words round. And it's the one, "Abide with me, abide with me, don't let me fall, don't let me go." Because just like John said tonight, God does abide with us all the time. We don't need to ask God to abide with us. It should be us abiding with him, but that doesn't fit the song. But I think the songwriter, I sort of get what he's saying, that he's almost, he's almost declaring it that, yeah, I know you're abiding with me. Walk with me, talk with me, help me through, walk ever close by my side. I know you're there. Whatever we go through, however big, however small, however mountain top, valley, whatever you want to call it, he's there. He's with us. He's abiding all the time. Just we have to abide in him. He's with us. So we're close with this song as we think on the things that have been said tonight. What's God said to me? What's God said to you individually? Have we been challenged? And I hope that God's challenged us in a different way. God's challenged us from a different viewpoint tonight as he's challenged me. As I wrote things down there and I thought, yeah, that sentence is for me. That bit's for me, that I need to do that, that's what God's saying. Otherwise, why do we study the Bible? Otherwise, why do we read scripture? But to hear what God's saying. To hear, to be touched, to be changed, to be moulded into his likeness. Isn't that what scripture's about? Changing us to be more like Jesus. Making us more like him. Your word to our hearts, we thank you, Lord, that you are our pruner, you are our gardener. Lord, we are the Lord in the vine, Lord, that you oh, Lord, we thank you that we are connected, we are attached and, Lord, we remain and we abide in you. We thank you, Lord, for all, Lord, those things that you give us, Lord, that fruit that Lord is in our lives and, Lord, the fruit that will come. Lord, as we go through this pruning, baby, Lord, it's necessary. Lord, as we heard tonight, Lord, the more that we prune, Lord, the better the fruit is, the more, Lord, that you do, Lord, the better. And the more that we grow in you. And that, Lord, your hat is, that, Lord, we grow as your children, that we grow, Lord, as kingdom people, that we grow as disciple makers, that we grow, Lord, in your grace, in your mercy, Lord, in your power, Lord, that you have poured out upon our lives. Lord, we thank you for this evening. We thank you, Lord. As we've dug and as we've heard and as we've listened. And that, Lord, we believe you spoke to our hearts, Lord, we pray. This week, that, Lord, we would meditate upon these things and we would chew upon these things, Lord, these questions that you've placed in our hearts. Lord, these things that, Lord, you've placed in our minds, Lord, help us. Help us to see, help us to hear, help us to be in tune with you. Lord. Lord, our hearts are open, our hands are open. Lord, we say, do as you will, oh, Lord. Do as you will in our hearts, do as you will in our hearts, Jesus. Lord, it's your glory. Lord, it's all about you, Jesus. And, Lord, we want to be more like you, we want to be made more like you, we want to grow. Lord, even, Lord, we be, some of us have been on the road quite a long time, but, Lord, there's always something that, Lord, you can do. Lord, make us more like you. So that as we go out into this world, Lord, that we would shine our lights for you. That we would shine for you, that we would be that, Lord, that we would bear that fruit, that we would, Lord, share that fruit with others. Lord, so that they will come to know you, so that they will come to receive, Lord, your gift. So that they will come to receive the great things that you've got for them. Help us to be sharers of your gospel. Help us to be, Lord, those fishers of men. Lord, we ask in your name. And for your glory, bless us, be with us, but before us be loud about us. In your name I ask. Hallelujah, Lord, please. Good bless, amen.